Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Sherburne Planning Board of Tuesday, December the 2nd, knowing that time is 7:01. We'll call this meeting to order. So I do I hear a motion to open the meeting of December the 2nd?
No.
So I think I heard a motion and do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Steph?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
And Rob?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Okay, so um. Do I should I go through?
Quickly read the agenda.
Read the agenda. Okay, so reading the agenda is first order of business is the minutes of November the 18th. Then we have a hearing at 7:10 for an A and R approval not required for 69 Forest Street. And then at 7:20, we have a stormwater management planning permit, 81 Prospect Street hearing. Then we'll be going on to current planning board business items for the annual town meeting of 2026, stormwater management plan draft language, housekeeping items, potential warrant language, and other items to consider. Then there will be other business for reports with other reports on meetings with other boards and entities and the town planner report. So with that said, do I have an approval or do I have any items not anticipated by the chair within the 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Hearing none. Do I hear? I make a motion to accept these, this agenda. Do I get to have a second?
Second.
So a motion made in second. All those in favor, Steph?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And I Frank Cookham aye as well. So the first item of that we mentioned on the agenda is the minutes of November the 18th. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? Would anybody like to see them? Or can we go straight to the approval process?
I had one comment. I'm just trying to actually pull them up here just so I can see if I'm really talking about the right thing. Wait another second. I kind of lost them somewhere in my desktop.
Steph, would you be able to?
Yeah, I can pull them up. Yep. We've got them open here.
You're always so good with that.
There, this screen. So that there are some sort of outstanding questions, I think. But go ahead, Rob. What were you looking at here?
Yeah, in the the three, the three delineations of the stormwater management permit, no permit, minor, and major, I would say at least in the first one where it says less than 20,000 square feet disturbance, and then there's a slash, and then less than that, that slash should be an and. And then in the next one.
I think it's an or.
I think it's an and in the first.
You're right. You're right.
Second one.
Yep, that's those are good points.
And I don't know, I this is, this is so obvious by implication, I think it would make it messy to state it, but obviously, you know, if you, if you read it totally literally, it would say that if you had like an acre of land disturbance or greater, that would that would require both a minor permit and a major permit. But I think it's obvious that the meaning is that if a major permit is required, it's not a minor permit.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't think we have to complicate it by trying to state that.
That's a good clarification on the and or the or. I was looking at this. I don't think it's that all projects must go through the admin review, because I think there was, I think there was some discussion about some projects being able to jump right to minor or major if you know they fit that requirement, but I'm not quite sure how to restate the highlighted language in a way that's more clear. That um like many projects would like the trigger, the trigger, the thresholds may be identified through the CONCOM administrative review, but the desired outcomes are these, something like that. Let me just try that. May be identified through CONCOM admin review. And the three levels reflect potential outcomes of that process, which is no permit minor or may. I think that works. I just hadn't had a chance to.
Anybody else have a comment on that particular section on the words that Steph just wrote? Okay, what about the next section, housekeeping items? Is that those good to me, Steph, actually? As well.
That's fine. Then there's a procedural question here. About we could just say discussed above or or none is fine. It's in the town planner report, as long as it's somewhere.
No other considerations discussed?
Yeah, I think the question is like, should things be moved between categories? And I do not feel that strongly, but as long as they're in the minutes, I don't care which topic they fall under. If people are in agreement with that. So I think it's fine to leave this as none. And then just as long as the topics show up.
Yeah, it's, this isn't actually, this is just minutes. It's not part of regulation. So it's not important, but I don't know if it's quite correct to say that all projects, it's kind of like, I mean, some projects don't require any permitting whatsoever, right? I think if you build a shed with no foundation and no electrical and plumbing, and it's less than some relatively small number of square feet, you don't even need a building permit.
Are we talking about this language here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I struck that language because I agreed with that. It wasn't. I'll try and make it bigger here. So I struck that. There's a strike through here. It's in track changes.
Okay, I didn't realize there was a strike through in that box. Okay.
Yeah. So it just says thresholds may be identified through CONCOM's admin review. And then the three levels reflect potential outcomes.
And also is may.
Sorry?
I said one of the key operatives there is the word may.
Yep. Okay. Um, can we move on to other business and hi, I'm trying to, Brett, there was some.
Yeah, and I think Heidi may have addressed the comments that I had. But so I think we might just need to delete the comments unless you feel like, unless you feel like, or you want to add anything or refine any of that.
Hey, everybody so far good with everything that's on the screen? Everybody good with the minutes? Are there any comments? Hearing none. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of November the 18th. Do I hear? As amended, very good point.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, I do it by those that I see on my Zoom screen. So that's Steph.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I Frank Cookham aye as well. Okay, those minutes have been approved. Thank you so much. And a special thanks to Brett for doing those, right? Good. Okay, the next item on the agenda is at 7:10. It is 7:10 is for an hearing for A and R. So I'm going to open the hearing for the, for an A and R. So I make a motion to open the hearing at 7:10 for A and R approval not required for 69 Forest Street. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So it's been motion and seconded. All those in favor, Jim Guarino?
Aye.
Rob Wolf?
Aye.
Brett Piercy?
Aye.
And Steph Harrison? And I Frank Cookham aye as well. We keep jumping around in these screens, but they go in different orders. Okay, so the the hearing has opened for approval not required. Heidi, would you like to take us through that?
Sure. So this is a fairly straightforward approval not required. We have Terry Ryan on here representing John and Jan Burris. They have a larger property that they're dividing into five lots. Terry, do you want to give a little more information on?
Yeah, this is, sure. This is unfortunately a bittersweet project for the Burises. They really have had this property in their family for generations, and the kids have moved away, and they're set to retire. And unfortunately, this is the only route they have to go with. So it's got more than enough land area. It's one acre zoning. We made all of the lots, the new lots, if you will, lots two through five are all three acres in size. Granted, they sort of zigzagged their way around back, but that was the only way we could give to some of that back land out there. And then the the existing house is going to be on a lot that's about, I think, just about 10 acres in size is what I left that one. A lot of, probably about 40% at least of the lot one is in wetlands that goes back along Sewell Brook out there. But the house is already built septic, and there aren't any problems with that thing. They're not going to do anything else to that. Soil testing's already been done on all of these lots, and everything was fine from that standpoint. They're going to be outside of conservation jurisdiction as far as proximity to the wetlands or the brook. And like I said, it needs the area, the frontage, and the width and everything out there. There's really not a whole lot else to say on this thing.
Thank you for that, Ms. Ryan.
Right. It has access acreage, frontage, setback lines. So this one shows the full lot, how it was initially with the red one showing the new lot numbers. And then the subsequent ones which were put online were more detailed ones of each of them to so you can see detail on the frontage, setback lines.
But I just, I just want to clarify in sharing the screen here that in this version, Forest Street is along the bottom of the page. So then when we go to the next one, it flips around and Forest Street is sort of along this, like north went to the opposite direction. So if you're looking at it, the frontage is now over here, and it shows the buildable areas along the street here.
That is correct. That is correct. That was just to try and fit these things on as few sheets as I possibly could.
Yep. And then here's the next sheet, which is a similar orientation. And then.
The better showing lot one.
Yep, that one's better showing lot one. And then this one, we flipped back around again with Forest Street down here to show the topography. So I know that, you know, one of the things that we've talked about as a planning board is, you know, access on A and Rs and things like that. So just this is helpful because each of these dashed lines, right, tells us how steep is the grade. If they're really close together, like right here, it's a really steep, you know, slope. And where they're more farther spaced apart, it's not very steep. So.
So each of those lines then represents a certain height. And if they're closer together, that means the the distance between each of those like circles that you see, their highest jump pretty, jump a lot quickly versus when they're far apart, they they jump over a larger distance.
And those are two foot contours.
Right. And there are no ponds or wetlands that they're going across here to the access.
Go ahead, Rob.
Uh, Jim, did you say those are two foot contours?
Yes, they are. Vertical rise between each of those dash lines.
Yeah, okay.
And the distance between those will determine the percent slope.
On the planning board, are there any further questions from anybody? Hearing none, we'll go to the audience. Is there anybody that's on this meeting that would like to ask a question? I see Marion has her hand raised. Marion?
Yeah, I just want to know, what is that dark line that's sort of an L that goes some, goes from the upper right and then turns down? What is that?
Yeah.
A stone wall.
Oh, thank you.
Are there any other questions from anybody else in the audience?
So Heidi, you said access acreage and frontage.
Yes.
And there's nothing, there's nothing about the width of the lots that is, it's all, it's all conforming. Yeah.
Yep, lot, yeah, lot one is 10.14 acres, but 701 frontage. Two is just over three acres with 192 feet frontage. Three is just over three acres with 150, 187 feet frontage. Four is three acres with 153 foot frontage. We need just 150 feet, just makes it. Lot five is 2.91 acres and has 236 feet frontage.
And this is that wonky little side street?
Yes.
Um, is this the really narrow one right here? Like?
Between the stop signs? Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a house that sits in that triangle where it says Lake Street.
Uh huh. Okay, yep. Okay, just trying to.
Is that the, I think it's on the other diagonal, isn't it by the the small little lake street?
You're right. It's Goulding Street. That's the really narrow one. You're right.
Sorry, with, yeah.
Goulding has the the narrowest. Okay, all right. Okay, well, I mean, it sounds like there's nothing to approve here. So since it's an approval not required, so I will move to endorse the A and R for 69 Lake Street.
You have a second? Okay, I'll second it. So it's been moved in second. All those in favor, Jim Guarino?
Aye.
Rob Wolf?
Aye.
Brett Piercy?
Aye.
Steph?
Aye.
And I Frank Cookham aye as well. Okay, so that's passed. Well, right, the second aspect is in terms of signing.
Yeah.
Well, I, uh, let me ask the question first, and then I'll make a motion. Does everybody want to come in and sign? Or would you prefer that one or of us or two of us come into the office and sign on behalf of the rest of us?
Be very, very happy for for Frank if you're going to be around to sign it for on behalf of everyone, if that works for folks.
Jim, does that work for you?
Certainly.
Rob?
Yeah, that's hard.
Brett?
That'd be great.
Okay, so I make a motion that Frank Cook comes into the office to sign for the entire board. If all, if everyone agrees, all those in favor of the motion?
Second.
Seconds, I got a second. So all those in favor. Rob Wolf?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Steph?
Aye.
And I Frank Cookham aye as well. Okay, so I guess I'll be going in and seeing you tomorrow, Heidi.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Terry. And John and Jan, good luck.
And with that, I want to close the hearing on the A and R for 69 Forest Street. And we have one minute. And so I'll start the process of opening the the hearing for the storm water management plan permit for 81 Prospect Street.
Heidi, do we need to vote to close the hearing or are we good?
I just closed the 69 one.
We didn't vote.
For. Do we need to vote it?
I would go ahead and vote it.
Okay, so I made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we moved in second at Steph?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I Frank Cookham aye as well. Okay, so now we can open the hearing for stormwater management plan permit, 81 Prospect Street. So that's the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's a move in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Brett?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Steph?
Aye.
And I Frank Cookham aye as well. So with the meeting, the hearing is open. Heidi, would you like to take us through this one?
Sure, I will start. And then I'm actually going to turn it over to Joyce Hastings, since she has the history. If this has already gone through Conservation Commission initially, then there was some amendments, and the amendments included reconstruction of the dwelling and moving the dwelling and adding a garage. And it triggered the over the acre of land disturbance. And conservation had wetland jurisdiction, and it triggers part of it by the road for us to look at as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Joyce if she wouldn't mind giving more of a history.
Joyce, if you please, we appreciate it.
Joyce, you're muted. I'm not, I'm thinking.
I'm, I'm just, I'm muting myself, sorry. So Nathaniel will share the plan and go through much more detail. He's the engineer for the project. But for starters, just to, you know, we, they filed this as a notice of intent to do, to construct a barn and to redo this, prepare a new driveway here and redo this driveway on this side to an existing garage. This would be a new barn. It's large. The house was going to just be reconstructed. So we issued an order of conditions. We asked them to address the fact that this driveway, this is a considerable driveway is, was impervious within the buffer zone, and they made it grass pavers. So it's basically blocks where the grass can grow up through them. They did that for both driveways to increase the impervious, the pervious area. They also create a swale down beside the driveway because we were concerned that we didn't want water coming off this slope and being directed towards the wetlands. And since there was such a large grass, this is all grass. Here, the tree line is in this area. We weren't, we were happy with the water coming off in this direction. And so we issued an order of conditions, we had, which had some mitigation. We had some plantings to beef up the buffer zone. The erosion control was part of it. We have wetland markers there to mark the edge of the wetlands. And we tried to, you know, basically, they did a lot to address what we were concerned about at the time with the, with the amount of work, the stormwater issues. So as Heidi mentioned, now we're going forward with the stormwater application. They've also filed a request to amend our issued order of conditions to reflect the house that's coming down and some of the changes that have been made to the plan from its, from our original approval. They've dropped the, the barn has been dropped in elevation about four feet since we approved it, which did some, changed some of the slopes here. But these are things that Nathaniel will address going forward now so that we can see how this will impact, how he's going to address your stormwater issues. I issued some comments. I reviewed the project, issued some comments, and would like to see, perhaps Nathaniel can run through them to to deal with that.
Yep, so I have the board would like me to pick up from there. I can go ahead and do that. Yep. So just for the record, my name is Nathaniel, as mentioned, with Stacey McNary. We are the design engineer on this project. Sorry, I'm confused looking at my screen here. Try that again. Okay. All right, there we go. So.
We can see your screen.
Great. Yep. So like Joyce mentioned, the biggest trigger for this application before the planning board now is the fact that the house had to come down in brief summary, basically during construction, it was discovered that the foundation would not be able to support what they wanted to do, so they had to remove it. And then in doing so, decided to move it out of the setback also so it would be compliant. And the total disturbance was kind of squeaking under an acre before this happened. And with all the site work and grades tying in and whatnot, and the fact that, you know, the change of the driveway and whatnot, that's a bit more work now. It's going over an acre. So the total site disturbance is about 73,000 with all things factored in. And that is a bit of an overestimation because that is just the perimeter of the silotation controls. We could tighten up, but they're kind of left with to give a little breathing room around the toes of the grades. So with the changes, though, that Joyce was mentioning, there, there's not really an increase in the footprint of the impervious area that we had already. So for example, with this driveway that's back here, this is going to be constructed with a grass paver, and we have a diesel for that on the plan. It's maintained the same footprint that we had, and the portion of which is in the buffer zone was approved and with the current outstanding order. But the, you know, the fact that the building got lowered a bit meant that certain parts of it had to be a lot steeper, obviously. So coming down, I think we're maintaining about a 10% slope coming down, and that kind of does impact the grades up here a little bit, but they are steep to begin with. So they still managed to tie in pretty similarly to how they were beforehand. And as was mentioned, even though it's impervious, we're still also putting a swale down the side of it to keep the water moving in a way where it runs across the most land possible before it runs to the wetlands. And just in case they weren't highlighted, the wetland runs all the way along the bottom of the page here. It's a pretty large wetland. It takes up a lot of space on the site. And as you can see from the tree line, which I'm hovering over now, the tree line is very close to the wetland. This is all lawn. It's all disturbed area. So there's no major wooded areas that are being cleared out. Pretty much all of the work is within currently disturbed areas. And then the closest points to resource areas are this driveway right here, which we got a waiver for from the commission the first time it was approved for the fact that it's within the no disturb zone, and that's also a grass paver. And like I said, that's really the closest point to the wetland. It's just under 20 feet. The rest of the work is mainly outside the buffer zone with the house moving into it a little bit more. We're showing the silotation controls around the site. It's going to be the straw bale with backed by the sill fence. And we're showing areas for stockpiling and staging, which are typical site management erosion control elements. And any number of these, I can go into more detail if there's questions or anything like that. But that's kind of an overall scope of everything. Obviously, this triggers the need for a NIPTE's permit, which we are in the process of submitting, that will be filed with NIPTEs before an acre of disturbance is reached. So even though construction activities have started on site, they mainly revolve around the house. So we're nowhere near the threshold, and that permit will be obtained from NIPTEs long before an acre of disturbance is reached. So if there's anything I missed that I was asked to go into detail on, I can, but I don't have anything else to add at this point, so I can give it back to the board.
So I do have a, there's a quick question about, excuse me, the brass pavers. There's a variety of different types of brass pavers, some that are much more pervious and some that are very little pervious or more impervious. Do you have any idea of the type that you're going to use for that so that we can see that is actually in fact going to be decent amount of brass and impervious, not pervious service, or pervious service, I should say?
Yes, yeah. So I zoomed in on the detail for it now. So it's turf stones. So this is a brand name specific product that you can buy. And we, according to the cut sheet, which we, I believe we gave to CONSCOM a while back, the impervious coverage is 30%. So 30% of it is impervious. And then, you know, it's, it's like a, you know, thing you put down, that's the, you know, so 70% voids. And then obviously, we're specifying the base of it to be gravel to aid in the water filtering through.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions by anybody on the board?
Frank, I wanted to ask where the construction entrance was going to be.
Okay. Okay.
Good question.
Nate.
Oh yeah, sorry, yep. Um I believe they're using right now uh the main driveway uh where it's open now. Um it's not called out on the plan, but there's an existing driveway here that they uh use for access to the site.
Okay.
Um I know the contractor is on the call, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Yeah, that is correct. Primarily, the the homeowners have been using a lower driveway down by the lower garage to access the property, but all our construction vehicles are using, and it's still currently paved. So to minimize the mud being tracked out of the road.
Okay.
And is there?
So during, so during construction, all your construction equipment is going to go through the paved entrance, not the, not the one down by the garage? Is that true?
Yeah, well, primarily, yes. We've, we've done, actually down in the lower area where the homeowners had been using the the driveway down by that lower garage prior. While that construction activities are going on, there was some mud that was starting to to build up there, but in addition to the uh erosion control that's already in place, we've also put some wood chips down in that area to kind of soak up that moisture and reduce runoff.
Please repeat the last part again, you broke up there for a moment.
Uh yeah, so the the homeowners were using the lower driveway to access the garage in the back. And so we did add some wood chips in that area and they, they're primarily the only ones that are accessing that back area, but all construction vehicles otherwise are using the paved area above. And then also to to even access around the backside, they're using that primary driveway that is uh was existing.
Okay. Uh I I don't think, I'm not worried about the homeowners using that blower driveway right now, it's it's gravel and grass. But if construction equipment's going to use it, you're gonna need to put a construction entrance on it with a um uh a stone pad, just because, uh just as you pointed out, because of the mud um tracking on the street. Uh Nathaniel, did you get the list of comments that I had?
I did, yes. I don't have them all committed to memory though, since it was uh said that the other day.
So the first one is um you have now taken the the dwelling and while you've you've moved it closer to the the buffer zone, you've also got a roof drain around the entire uh house. And you are discharging it right inside the buffer zone, one, you're taking the whole roof and you're discharging it right into the buffer zone. So uh what what we're, what I'm looking for is to have one inch of, first of all, infiltration for one inch of roof runoff off the surface of the roof. And then the outlet to that, just to be some kind, I see you've got um uh a riprap outlet, just to provide a detail for that so that we can just show that it's gonna have something to dissipate the energy from the, all that water that's gonna come to that one point off the surface of the roof, because that's gonna be a lot of water. I'm not particularly worried about the foundation drain, that's, that's going to be low uh velocity, as long as your roof drains are not tied into your foundation drain.
No, yeah, those will be separate, yeah. Um yeah, I mean, we can update it to have um and this can go on updated plans before the uh Conscom being, but we can show a more um level outlet so that it has a chance to pond before um running off. Um yeah, so those are details we can add.
And so the same thing for, you know, notice you're capturing half of the the barn roof and you're swaling the other half. Um but we would look, be looking for the same infiltration of one um inch of runoff over the surface. So however you capture that um into an infiltration system, that's again, do the same thing with that outlet for your roof drain. Um that would handle the stormwater concerns. Um I had a wetland comment on there, but we'll save that for conservation. You've answered the construction entrance question I had. You have two steep slopes, one with the drive, one with the adjacent to the septic system um and between the septic system and the existing barn. And then the other one coming down the slope. And you're going to wanna do two things, you're gonna wanna stabilize that while you're, everything's under construction in some fashion, whether you use a landscape fabric or however you do that. Um but also, you you while you're, while the grass is waiting to grow, you're gonna need to stabilize that. Whether it's at the same time, whether you just do it once. But once you disturb that slope, you're gonna wanna stabilize that before um spring. I I realize it's a steep slope now, but if it's all disturbed, I'm concerned about running off into uh towards the wetlands when the soils are all exposed. So you, and then uh if you could just put some detail on that as to how you're gonna stabilize those.
Yep.
And then um lastly, uh just from a stormwater perspective, you've got you've done a great job putting the erosion control around the limits of the project on the downhill side, with the exception of going across the front yard. Um and while at the moment it's all grass, I I'm speculating that you're gonna be doing something to rehabilitate that grass because you're digging trenches and you've, you've got some grading there. Um we'll, you you will probably need to put a, some kind of maybe a straw wattle, not the, not the same um level that you went around the other sides. Uh but uh a straw waddle and then uh if it, if it becomes a problem, then you'd have to beef it up during construction.
Along the front towards the street, you're saying?
Right, I I don't, I'm pointing, but you can't see it.
That's okay.
Pretend I'm pointing along your frontage.
Yeah, 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 protecting the road, yep. Okay.
And I believe those were all of my comments.
Are there any questions from anybody on the planning board?
Yeah, I just had one quick question. Um I think I'm looking at the paved driveway. And um since it's going to an existing house, I'm assuming it's the same configuration and location as the existing driveway? Is that a reasonable assumption?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that there's not an increase in runoff from impervious surface.
Nathaniel, show her the limits of the, you can see the existing driveway underneath.
It's a little different. The gray is the existing one. It's mainly to widen it out so that they can go into this access path that runs down to where the barn is. Um so that this driveway follows a cart path. Um the the, this will be grass paver right here, but then I can mark it up a little bit um.
I can, I can see it.
Yeah, well, you see the gray, so this.
Where it says cart path would be the the grass pavers and then the bit, the bit driveway is slightly expanded.
By a little, a little bit, yes.
Is, yeah, is there, there's a provision though, Grace, uh I'm sorry, there's a, there's a provision though, Joyce, for not increasing stormwater runoff through the NPTES process, is that correct? So that's not something we need to like?
Well, that's mostly erosion control, but I would think with this you know, they do still have some, a lot of it, if you look at the contours, some of it's still going over the grass, so that should be okay, it's not all um that little bit is directed towards both the grass. If you can point where the contours are going, it, because they go down the side, the the grass there on both sides, so I think that little bit is um is is somewhat insignificant.
Okay.
Any other questions from anybody on the planning board? Here we go, uh we do have somebody in the audience, Marion, uh have a question, would you like to ask your question?
I do, yes, uh just for information. Um I I'm familiar with this land, I live nearby and that slope is really quite steep uh and the the I guess it's the um west side of the, the upper side of this picture um where the cart path lies. So that, that is an existing cart path, I believe. I'm not sure it winds all the way around the way you have it, but I do know that um that slope is quite steep and brush hill, which which this is the slope of um gets a lot of quite fast runoff during rain because the the soil overburden is very shallow uh in general. So you have a lot of groundwater coming on the surface and under the surface down that hill. Um and most of this, the groundwater on this property presumably ends up in that wetland and intermittent stream down at the bottom. But I'm concerned about even the grass pavers of that cart path um may have a hard time absorbing uh all that water. And uh the water is gonna be directed down to the, to the new big barn and the the big uh cement, whatever it is. Uh uh a a big cement, what are you calling it? Is it a, and a brin?
Concrete pad.
Concrete pad, thank you. Um so it'll be basically stopped by those structures and run around. And hopefully it'll be absorbed in the big grass field. But I'm concerned about what the use of that um paver, the cart path is and how, how necessary and for what purpose it is. Because it would be great if there, if it remained a dirt cart path with no pavers at all. So I mean, just, can you tell us a little more about the use of that path and why it needs to be paved, even though it's permeable pavers?
Mrs. Chair, would you like me to ask that question?
Yes, please.
Yep, so um the purpose of this is to access the rear of this building. Uh it has the radius, which it has, uh which is the reason it swings out quite a bit. So that a uh vehicle towing a trailer could comfortably navigate it as opposed to having a really sharp turn that they wouldn't otherwise be able to navigate. Um so you know, to the points of a slope and whatnot, um you know, following the recommendations made by uh Joyce, the conservation agent, we can show um stabilization of the slopes, so that basically involves putting usually a uh fabric or something like that down to hold it in place. Um so that when the grass grows on it, has something to cling to and it doesn't run off um during a rainstorm. And then the uh purpose of the grass paver isn't necessarily to infiltrate all of the water that is gonna come off the slope, but to mitigate it and to be something that's more impervious than pavement would be. Um so the point is basically to mimic grass as much as possible while also being stable. Obviously, grass is not fully pervious, a lot of, you know, runoff does run off of grass uh to some extent. But it's not going to be as much of a runoff um as pavement would be. And you know, this is kind of the location that it has to go in, this is as tight of a curve as we were able to get to access the rear of this building, like I said, with a vehicle that would be um towing a trailer. And um you know, like I, you know.
Is it going to uh be carrying pretty heavy weights? You mentioned trailers. Um what about the uh the durability of the grass pavers under heavy weight? Usually they aren't expected to carry a heavy weight.
Uh I know they are, they're often used as the shoulders for uh common driveways where you would expect uh vehicles like fire trucks going by and delivery vehicles and whatnot. Um so they are, they are rated to withstand uh vehicles in general, so it's not just cars, but it's uh heavy trucks, like I say, we use them for uh fire truck access a lot. Um they are capable of withstanding um heavier loads than just like a passenger car.
Okay.
Will you be, will you be cutting much, uh many trees on that uh slope to install that road?
Uh I don't have a number of trees or anything for you. I know it's wooded, I don't know um, you know, an exact number, but the answer is obviously no more than we need to. Um the owners are very interested in maintaining as much of their uh land as possible and not doing any more work than that we need to. This is also part of the reason why the slopes are as tight as they are, we don't wanna grade out any amounts that might, you know, maybe it'll be more flat, but then you'd be reaching further with your work. Um everything's kept tight. Uh the limit is the, you know, the tree line really mostly just juts out where I'm hovering my mouse right now, it's kind of one small area and we're not making any distinction on whether it's um you know, on the number of mature trees that are in here, but the fact that it just will be cut back to only the minimum extent that we need to build this access road to get to the backside of the building.
It's prim- that that area is primarily scrub brush um where it cuts in, that that, to your point, that was an exist- cart path that actually is following that same pathway until you make that curve and that is uh a mix of meadow and scrub brush.
Yep.
One of the things that you mentioned doing underneath the uh that grass and the um the pavers is putting some um uh crushed stone, stone to help with um. How, how, how do you think that'll help with the, the loss of the thirty percent that the the pavers would provide? Will that increase the uh the permeability of that area or or kind of make it a net zero or is it gonna be a little bit less as a, or a question or just ask?
Yeah, there's different ways of looking at it really, so I mean it, you know, it kind of all depends. Um i- in general, it helps the permeability. Um you know, usually if you have um any type of like pervious um like driveway, or even if you have porous asphalt or whatnot, you underlay it with certain levels of, layers of gravel to aid in permeability, so it does help permeability. Um you know, to what extent it does, I mean, it kind of all depends on how it's being calculated, but um you know, you could look at it as like a storage volume type of thing. Um um or you could just, you could assume, like, you know, the most conservative assumption would be to assume that it's just the equivalent of grass that it um has a similar, you know, curve number, as you would call it, to grass. Um but it, you know, it doesn't worsen that thirty percent I was talking about of uh permeability, but you know, it's meant to it's meant to store the water that does permeate before you get to the um what would be like the subbase that would be like compacted, so it's meant to store the the water.
Got it. Are there any other questions by anybody on the planning board?
Did you say that those are seventy percent open space?
Yes, yep.
Oh. I may be looking up the wrong thing, but I was just looking that up and I see something called turf stone that's forty percent open space.
I mean, I don't have like the white page in front of me, but when we um sent in the, you know, like I said, we sent a cut sheet in for this and the um the imperviousness was uh thirty percent, so that would correspond to, yeah, seventy percent of it being um voids or open to water filtering through.
Can I share my screen for just a second, please? So I I don't know that I have the uh exact one that that you're recommending, but I just wanted to show just the others that are on this call. What what pavers, uh these grass pavers look like that they're talking about. So you could have more open area ones, you could have less open area. So there there is, you know, uh um difference in the type of uh pavers that they uh that they offer. More open, less open, so that's what we're talking about, the percentage of uh water that's able to uh filter through. If you have something that looks like this um versus, I can't get rid of this. Um sorry. I don't know what that is.
Is that the actual product?
No, no, I just, I just picked, I'm just clicking on some that are different levels, I'm trying to X out of this one particular one. Versus one that's like this, which is uh, you know, a less um pervious, more impervious, has less grass area. So it just shows the difference. I don't have the exact one that that they were talking about, because I didn't know what it was ahead of time. I just wanted to give you an an idea of what they look like and um, you know, the different levels of uh permeability of water through the grass or the grass through the uh the pavers.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So it's uh labeled on the, on the plan or equal to the product being specified? So what performance criteria would can be considered and as equal?
Go ahead and answer it, yep. Um I mean, basically anything that functions, you know, the same way, um you know, anything that has a similar rating for permeability and it looks the same. The purpose of that is to get some, you know, to approve the function of something. And a lot of times, the exact aesthetics of what is being built is still being decided by the owner, uh or maybe they will change their mind. Um we don't like to lock people into some very, very specific products if we can help it, um as long as it functions the same way. Um you know, usually we, uh the hope is that they can get staff permission to just swap out products if there's a different one than the one we call out on the plan that they. Than the one we call out in the plan that they end up preferring.
It wouldn't be less, you, you wouldn't approve something that's less permeable?
No, yeah, approved, approved equal, the, the meaning of that is that it, it has the, the same function.
Assuming the, the, the strength for the, the load strength as well as the permeability.
Yep, by the way, I, I was misspeaking this entire time, it is forty percent imperme- permeability. And that, that's, it's noted on the plan as such, I just kind of caught that. When I went to look for the cut sheets, so my apologies, but that is what we did get approved initially. So that product that you found online, whoever was mentioning it, that mentioned that it was forty percent, that's probably the exact one that you're looking at, and I just checked the cut sheet that we submitted. And it is forty percent, so I'm sorry for misquoting that, but. That, like I said, that's consistent with what, despite what I was saying, what we were approved for originally. And it seems to correspond to the one that. That was. Mentioned that you, that you found online that you're looking at. So if one was substituted, that's what we would look for, that it had the same level or better of imper- permeability.
That's all I was asking, thanks.
Brett, do you have any further questions? Stephanie, do you have any further questions?
With the slopes, what are, what are you thinking about like cut fill, or is it a sort of net, net balanced on cut fill? More or less, or are you expecting a major import or a major export, I'm just curious?
Yeah, I think I, I think I ran, I think I ran this, I'm trying to find the number. Maybe I did not. Sorry, give me one second, I might be confusing my. Self here. Looks like I did not, but if I had to. Kind of make a prediction, I would assume that we are having a net fill most likely. Mostly because of the septic system probably raised, brings that number up quite a bit, the septic system is quite. Quite a few feet above grade because of the setback requirements and the water table and the type of system it is, so that. That alone puts it up quite a bit, a lot of it. A lot of it will cut very similarly, but kind of just my prediction without a number is that. That it will be a net fill rather than a net cut.
Okay, it looks like the cart path is all a little bit below, like you're lowering the grade of the cart path, because all the. Contours are a couple of feet below the existing contours and the concrete pad is the same. And I can't tell on the, on the new barn, but. Probably similar, similar to the, the pads, so it looks like there's quite a bit of cut on the cart path and the barn structure and then maybe some, I'm sorry, quite a bit of. Cut out, and then you're also saying the excavation from the. Septic system, okay.
That's just looking at the grades, I'm not, yeah, I mean, if I was thinking about the. Taking fill out for the buildings, that might offset the fact that the, there's a. That cut might offset the fact that there's a fill for the leach fields. It's hard to say, but you know, when I scan across this plan, the highest. The greatest grade increases where the leach field is, where it goes from around. Two oh six, two oh seven, to two ten, two eleven, and like you're saying with that driveway, that cart path. It looks to me like most of the contours are within two feet of existing ones.
Right, Jane, do you have any?
I was just wondering, is there a clearance requirement from the well to the, to the? Grasspaver cart path, is it clearance to driveways, isn't there? It looks pretty close.
I don't know if there's a. Driveway setback requirement, are you talking about the fact that it's permeable or?
I'm just wondering, I mean, that would be a board health thing, that's not us anyway, so.
I can try to find it out for you, but.
They have just filed with the Board of Health and they're going through that review.
Jane, do you have any questions?
Don't, I've asked it. Or Jane or James.
That was Jane, actually. So Jane, Jane shook her head no, so I think you're okay, Jane. And Jim, you're, it sounded like you're okay too. And I have no further questions. So Heidi, do we?
Excuse me, may I ask a question, I'm Suzanne Gergenty, ninety nine prospect, I'm a butter on the backside, not. For this particular piece of the land.
So I'm sorry, yes, absolutely, you may, please.
Oh, thank you. Nathaniel, can you just discuss, what's the purpose of the big building on the site plan? Just as building, new building, I think.
I mean, I guess, does the applicants team want me to discuss this, I mean, it's not really relevant to the design, so.
I'm happy to speak to it, the clients are, are both engineers and they. Do all sorts of different types of projects, there'll be woodworking shop in there. They will have equipment, they intend to use the land in a similar fashion to what has been used in the past, so they may have a tractor. At the site along with some, you know, smaller equipment that they utilize, but it's, you know, primarily a work, workspace for. For both of them.
So it's not for income purposes?
There'll be no commercial equip, I guess, if you're getting at, there'll be no commercial equipment, there won't be dump trucks or. Backos or bulldozers or anything like that, this is all. Domestic hobby equipment.
Maker space?
Yeah, essentially.
Alright, so there's a question from Marion Neutra, would you like to ask a question, Marion?
Yeah, yeah, just a quick question, just as a follow up. What, what then is the purpose of the big cement pad? That seems really excessive for just a workshop, so what, what's the purpose of that?
Working outside. And staying out of the mud.
So I'm, I'm a little confused because in the description of the application, it said hang barn, can you just? Tell me, define what that is?
It's, the, one of the, the owners has a hobby, he builds glider planes. That he uses up at a airstrip out near Worcester. And so in the wintertime, they, they get folded up on a trailer. And he'll store it in that building and work on it as needed.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? From anybody on the planning board or not on the planning board? Hearing none.
I, I'm sorry. Suzanne, again, can I ask one more follow up question? Given the, the fact, you know, this is the stormwater review of. Stormwater management, if. If there are potential impacts, environmental impacts. You know, we can't obviously tell people what they can do in their own house, but what kinds of measures are. Taken by your committee to kind of do an environmental assessment of impacts. By these changes that are being proposed, just level set me there.
So, so most of this is within the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. And we really address that in our order of conditions where we limit what they can use for fertilizers. Limit what they can have in the, in the buffer zone in particular, so. I mean, that's really all that's, that's within our jurisdiction or the planning board's jurisdiction unless it moves on to something more. But. But no, they aren't, i- i- within the conservation's jurisdiction, they cannot outlet anything into it without. A permit or approval.
Thank you, Joyce.
Heidi, so we need to make a motion on this?
To a, a, approve, approve with conditions? Yeah, before we do that, maybe we should talk a little bit about potential conditions. I've got a couple sort of that. Have been used in past stormwater permits that may be relevant for this case. That we could discuss as a planning board maybe, so was, is that, is that a reasonable next step? Before we go, before we go to a motion, okay. So given that this project has not been approved by Concom yet, is that correct, it's going into the Concom later this month? So one of the conditions that seems reasonable to me would be the, the condition that the project is approved by the, by the Concom. And, and they'll have their own conditions on it, right? So we don't want to issue an approval if it's not going to get mutual approval from the Concom. One condition that we often have in. Our, is, our permits is to ensure that an as-built of the project is provided to the planning board upon completion of the project. Just so we have a record of what was built. So these are the most common conditions. Other conditions that potentially would be relevant to this project. Are that erosion controls in accordance with the plans. Would be installed prior to the start of the work and maintained over the duration of the project. And that the street be swept clean daily as needed, I mean, I do see that downsloping paved driveway as a runoff source. I remember in another part of town watching a construction site over the rainy season, just. Sweep all this construction, rain all this construction runoff into the street. And so just, you know, in, in acknowledgement of the possibility of. Construction caused debris in the runoff, just to have a clause for street sweeping. As needed. These are all from other stormwater permits that the planning board has issued in the last, in the past.
With, with that, let me pose some language on this stuff, you have wording that you'd like to pose?
Do you mean, do you mean language for the conditions?
Language for the motion, I, I'm happy to move something or if you want to move it.
Well, I'd, I'd have a couple other things to add. Yeah, I think we should keep discussing the conditions, make sure on the same page on the conditions before we jump to the motion language, if that's okay, Frank.
Heidi, you wanted to add something?
Yes, I think we want to make sure that the erosion control, at least straw wattles are put along the street frontage. Or stronger if needed. If we see that the erosion's causing an issue with the street, that the, it's not a straw, why don't we go to a stronger erosion? But I would have something in the language for that on the street frontage. And I don't know if you want to put anything in there about stabilizing the slopes by the septic field. That's towards the existing barn. And, and a construction entrance with a stone pad if the, the existing barn is used. So I'd put that in as well.
And what's the linear feet of that, is that like twenty five linear feet?
That's the stone, the stone, yeah, that's, I think we've done twenty five feet.
Do we want to review, do we, do we want to at least? On some middles? As part of the as-built package?
I don't think traditionally the planning board has taken that level of involvement in projects, but I would defer to others if there's an interest.
And I think Joyce might have had some other comments. Yes, I, I would like you to include the infiltration system for the roof and the barn. As well as the armoring of the outlets, because that's outside corn conservation's jurisdiction. As well as stabilizing the slopes with. Either fabric or, or some type, type of geotextile. As I outlined in my comments.
Okay, so I think I've captured what we've discussed so far. Maybe, maybe the motion could be to grant the stormwater management permit with the conditions as follows. But also allow some latitude for. Heidi to wordsmith the conditions without changing the intent, just because we're not. Authoring them word for word here in this session. So if that, that nature of emotion would work, I can read out the conditions that we've talked about so far and make sure we're not missing any.
You have also that the project is approved by the Conservation Commission. And that as, that as-built of the project provides the planning board upon completion of the project?
Yep, those were the first two I mentioned, yep.
Why don't you read it out and see if we should have any further discussion on it?
Okay, so the motions I have right now are that the project is approved by the Conservation Commission. That erosion controls in accordance with the plan be installed prior to the start of any work on the site and that they be maintained. For the duration of the work. That erosion controls are installed along the street frontage and improved as needed. I didn't put in straw wattles specifically, I just called it erosion controls, I don't, do you want straw wattles specifically?
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay, that slopes are stabilized by the septic field, fabric or geotextile. Was there another slope?
But between the bar, the new, the new barn.
The cart path and the barn?
Or that slope, that facing slope.
Between the, and.
Up gradient of the new barn.
Oh, okay, thank you, up gradient. The new barn, that a construction entrance with a twenty five foot. Construction entrance, twenty five feet of stone be installed if the unpaved driveway is used by construction vehicles. Unpaved might not be the right word. But the, the, the secondary driveway, maybe I'll just call it that.
Secondary driveway to existing barn, maybe that.
Okay. Installed, Joyce, I want to make sure I got this correctly. That infiltration systems for the house roof and the barn roof are installed as shown in the plan. With additional detail for the outfalls, I believe, for the energy dissipation of the outfalls.
So you, you just, you could require that they install infiltration systems to. The first inch of runoff over the surface of the roofs. Infiltrate that and then to armor the outlets. And provide details on the plan.
Okay, that infiltr- infiltration systems. To infiltrate the first one inch of runoff on the surface of the roofs, house and barn and armor the outlets with details to be provided on the plan. That the street be swept clean on a day, daily as needed and that an as-built of the project. Be provided to the planning board upon completion of the project.
Can I ask you a question, when you say barn, which structure are you talking about?
The new, well.
Not the one close to the wetland? Okay, just want to clarify, because they're both called a barn, just.
I've put new barn in them.
That works for you.
Are, are we missing any conditions? Are we missing any conditions for those?
I, I think the, the grass pavers are specified already in the plan, so they don't need to be specified here again. Alright, any further comments from anybody on the board? Any further comments from anybody not on the board? So, so are we now ready to make a motion? Okay, so. Okay, so um. I move what Steph has written and has read out to the rest of us. And if you like it, Steph, you want to read it one more time for clarity's sake?
May- maybe I'll just um clarify that the motion would be to grant the stormwater management permit with the conditions discussed. And allow the town planner to um clarify language without without um altering the intent of the conditions. Will that, does that resonate with the board as a motion?
It does, but could you say it one more time so I get it right?
To our amazing minutes person, it would be to grant the stormwater management permit with the conditions as discussed. And allow the town planner to modify the language of the conditions, so long as it doesn't alter the intent.
And town planner.
Say it again the same way?
And Heidi, you okay with that?
Okay, so that's the motion on the table then.
So I second it.
Second.
All those in favor? Brett?
Hi.
Bro, Rob. Frank.
Rob?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Dev?
Hi.
My friend will come in I as well, okay?
All right, thank you for your time.
Yep, thanks all, have a good one.
Thank you. And then Frank, motion to close?
I'll make the motion to close the uh, the hearing on, let me get this. Eighty-one Prospect Street for the Stormwater Management um Plan Permit. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Move a second and all those in favor, uh, Rob?
Hi.
Brett?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Dev?
Hi.
And I bring up from an eye as well. All right, thank you, everybody. So the next item on the agenda is current planning board business items for ATM twenty twenty-six. Stormwater management, some more plan draft language. Heidi, would you like to take us uh through this?
Sure. So um, I have gone through and met with Joyce and I sat down and looked at our current bylaw, came up with some changes. Uh, Jane has also put in some um suggestions and we reviewed some of it. So if we want to bring it up, we can discuss what we're looking at. We're hoping also to realign some of the regulations. The problem we're going to have is we we can't change the regulations to match the storm bylaw till the stop till the bylaw is approved at town meeting and then by the Attorney General's Office. So there's actually only going to be limited regulation changes that we can make, I think, at this time till we know that we're through the whole approval process and that the bylaw was approved. That said, I think we should focus on the stormwater bylaw. There are some stormwater regulation changes that we should make with the public hearing. Um, that we, I'll go over it, that not this planning board meeting, the next planning board meeting. Um, but I'm hoping that's okay from a procedure point here for planning board. Just to focus on the bylaw first.
I think that uh works for the planning board, speaking for the planning board.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, let's move forward with that.
Okay, um, did did anyone have a chance to review this other than Jane?
I did.
You did? Okay, great.
I scanned through it.
Use, okay, oh, good, so I'll have some, to grab my notes here on these. There'll be some, some uh going back and forth. Um, so yeah, I guess we'll start at the beginning. The purpose, what I'm trying to do here is we're trying to add land disturbance as part of our stormwater management bylaw. Uh, so we just had someone enter, so I'm trying to figure out. And this is what several of the other towns have done. And I think this would be good to capture just exactly like the project we had seen just now. Um, for, we have some smaller projects in town that would need it, and I think last time you saw Joyce showed examples of projects that would meet our criteria and would not. What I'm trying to keep in focus is we don't want our bylaw to be too specific. We want to have it refer to the regulations to, so that, which are easier to change. Um, but we do want to have it have some reference that there will be different levels. Um, and we also want to capture all discharges in town, not just to the MS four. So I think, I don't know if Sean's still on the call, but he was on the call and and the MS four will be coming to include the whole town at some point. I don't think it includes it right now. So the purpose, what we're trying to say is that this is broader than just the town's MS four system. Uh. Going along here, I think if you want to see some of the changes in red that I put in all.
Ha- Heidi, I don't understand the first sentence, basically.
Okay.
Originally said regulates all discharges and land disturbances to the MS four. And then basically just move that to the municipal storm sewer system to the end where I'm not even sure what it, what that refer, does it? Is it doesn't even seem to make grammatical sense to me. Does that, you're still saying it's all discharges to the municipal storm sewer system? What does it mean?
Okay, so what I'm what I'm trying to say and and definitely could use some help on on the language we're trying to convey, we're trying to can because the stormwater was written specifically for the MS four, we want to make sure we don't do anything that doesn't then refer to MS four, because that's what uh the DEP and and the feds wanted to see was our stormwater regulation for MS four. What we're trying to do is expand it and have it include anything in town, but also mention that it covers the MS four. So that's why I moved that to be all discharges and we'll see, we can say disturbances of land if we want to be more consistent with what we say later or land disturbances. To protect the towns with the water bodies. So I was kind of, we had in here these things that we wanted to protect, but then also the to would protect the um and discharges to the municipal, the MS four.
I was trying to make. Instead of, could, could we say a and here instead of two? I think that would make a little more sense, because we're saying to safeguard.
Right.
Health, safety, welfare, environment, and the the stormwater system.
That's fine. The intent is, I'm just trying to say this is an additional thing, but we're, the goal should be all of the land disturbances.
Okay.
So then maybe you should do a um, um, a colon at after land disturbance to include those things.
Is that the intent though? I'm sorry. I I was going to ask Heidi, is the intent to qualify, in other words, would it make are, would it make more sense to say to protect the town of Sherburne's water bodies? Although we had some discussion about whether that should be Commonwealth, you know, waters of the Commonwealth, but we can figure that out. Um, and groundwater, including with that, it should, in other words, should the reference to the municipal stormwater system come there? That we're, that's among the things we're trying to protect? Is that the intent?
It it might be, I just didn't want it to be right on the first thing that's all, like, in the way it was written right now, the only thing it was MS four. So somehow I want to say that it's more than that, but also includes MS four. So I'm fine with wherever anyone wants to stick it, what they think that would be. You know, grammatically correct.
Say to protect the water bodies, groundwater and municipal storm sewer system and to safeguard public health and such.
Yeah, that's what I was going with it too. And then delete this.
Yep.
Now, the only challenge, so I'm doing this in track changes, which means it's going to show up in a different color, so I'm going to actually not do it in track changes. Well, how do you want me to do this? Heidi, do you want me to track the changes?
No, just go ahead and change it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I have to do a little bit of.
Yeah, so that was, that's actually, I guess that sort of implicitly answers a question I had, right? Was thinking when I read this, which is, is this meant to to regulate all discharges, including just something you're doing on your own property? It's not running off the property, it's not running into wetlands, it's just coming out one place and going in another. It still means to regulate that as well.
I mean, if you, if you are disturbing an acre of land and you have a twenty acre property, it's still subject to this bylaw.
Okay. So. Yeah, I guess there's still the limits. I mean, it's like if you're um, you know, if you're uh one of your downspouts is causing erosion and you put in a splash block, that's that doesn't require permitting presumably.
No.
Okay.
It still, it still needs to be fixed a little bit, because it doesn't make sense to protect the town uh Sherb- of Sherburne's water bodies. Which in, which is the groundwater and the municipal uh separate storm sewer system.
No, the storm sewer system is not a water body. So it's water bodies, which are sort of colloquially considered to be surface water bodies, right? And then the groundwater and then also the MS four system.
So maybe take out that and between water bodies and groundwater and put a comma?
Yeah, that that's fine, I just um, it it makes it kind of feel like a run-on sentence, but that's fine. Let's try that and see what we how we get.
And then make, what if you put a period at the end of that and say the goal is to safeguard the public health, safety, welfare?
Yeah, so period after MS four and start a new sentence.
Yep.
Ah?
Let's do safeguard. Where's the intent, whatever, I mean, whatever again, you can. So uh, can we move on to the next yellow uh section?
Uh, so this here, we have a reference to this report. And if you look up and Google the E O E A file number eight eight four four, it comes up Town of Wilmington. And so I'm concerned that this reference may not be correct. And so I've highlighted that I'm going to have to research further, that we should say it it refers to some report, that's fine. But I don't think we should refer to another town's report.
Yeah, I agree.
That's all I have, everything.
If anyone has a history on that, let me know, because I'm just not sure what that meant. Um. So the next one down was number four. And uh. What we want to add in here, so again, this was geared initially only towards the storm MS four system. We want to expand it to make sure that in the bylaw, it's clear that it's the wetlands, resource areas, public streets, abiding properties. And the town's storm drainage system, which I have to make sure if our, when they say the town's storm drainage system, is that also mean MS fours, that are they synonyms? Because why do they say it here then later on say MS four? So again, if anyone has any history on that, that'd be welcome.
Maybe uh Eddie Mayer or um Sean Colleen could help.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, my goal was that we were going to spend two sessions on this drafting this bylaw, so today I was trying to go through and pick up get get a certain part, we'll have some things, some work to do on it, and then we're bring it back again at the next meeting. Tom might have, Tom Trainer has his hand up and he, maybe he has some good information for us.
Um, can you uh add something?
I I can quickly add and I think answer that last question, they are not synonymous.
Okay.
The MS four is a geographical region uh that the EPA has laid out where most of the towns' stormwater conveyance system uh manholes uh and everything exist. But there's plenty of uh structures outside of that geographic region that I think would be considered uh town stormwater uh devices. I hope that.
Okay, so.
You're gonna say then and um, MS four.
It would be including MS four, right? Because MS four is a, I think what I hear you say, Tom, is that MS four is a subset of this town's drainage system.
That's correct. It's in the most populated area of the town.
That makes sense.
Yeah, the densest area.
So then looking at this in reverse, everywhere where it currently says MS four, we need to go back and think about whether we really just mean the limited MS four or whether we mean something broader.
Mm hmm. Well, the, you know, in an ideal world, we would like to minimize all pollutant discharges, right? But the MS four is where we're actually regu- the town is actually regulated.
Yeah.
So there's a little more sort of teeth, I guess, or um. Uh, and it's to, Tom, do you know um for those areas that are in the drainage system but not MS four? They don't, they wouldn't discharge to like waters of the state, right?
They discharge to all of our streams that flow into the Charles River, whether or not.
Okay, so they are still tributary to the Charles River, okay, interesting. Interesting.
Or 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 the Sudbury River.
Right.
All of them?
All the streams go somewhere.
No, that I'm saying there's a, do all the stormwater go to the streams?
I know, some some uh go to uh isolated wetlands and they go all all over the place.
Is there a, is there a nexus with MS four in terms of the ability to regulate differently if it's an MS four? Um. Objective versus sort of just a stormwater objective? Is there anything that precludes us from not talking about MS four, but talking about the town's drainage system? In general?
I, the only thing thing I could think of was, is this was created specifically under the Fed and the state guidelines and that, where they requiring it, so that's why I thought we have to say MS four. But I could be wrong, but I figured i- it's in here for a reason. So I figured we could expand on it, but I didn't think we could drop MS four language.
So the question is, do we have to put MS four as the comma MS four for every single one of these listings?
Um, it's actually in, most of it, that was one of the few ones that didn't have list spell out MS four.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, when you go down to the number six, it says MS four.
Could we say um everywhere we say MS four, could we say MS four and other town drainage systems and just have that?
That's what I wondered if that.
That sounds good, yeah.
Yeah.
Then then we cover everything.
Well, is that our intent, though? I mean, that is a much more uh, you know, expansive set of requirements if we go that route. And that, you know, that could have real significance.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think that there is an intention to to protect all the 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 receiving waters for all of the drain systems, even if they're not MS four regulated. And I think that to the extent that we're saying, like, I I, you know, I was looking at sort of like some of the wording around like eliminate soil erosion, like, I don't think that we can say that we're going to be able to do that, right? But but when we say minimize discharge of. But, but when we say minimize discharge of pollutants, it's not, it's not just from the MS four. I don't think that we want to minimize discharge of pollutants. It's from MS four and, and all of the towns and other town drainage systems. That anything we want to do in MS four, we would want to do for the other town drainage sys- the other elements of the town drainage system. It's just that we're required to do them for MS four in some cases, right? But I think we, we as a town would probably say that it's in our interest to to have those same goals for areas that aren't regulated by MS four.
Individual catch basins, for instance, or?
I'd be interested to know more because, Tom, I didn't know the answer to that question and I'm curious, like, you know, of, of the town's drainage systems, is ninety percent of it MS four or is twenty percent of it MS four? You know what I mean? Like, do we have a lot of minor pipes that discharge to little tributary brooks that are not MS four?
You'll, you'll have to look, look at Sean's maps. I, I don't know the answer to that. And the other thing that, that's kind of coming up in my, my mind is you're grappling with, uh, this, you know, a lot of, lot of the, uh, towns, uh, uh, emphasis on dealing with MS four and EPA regulations is, is specific to the consent decree on the Charles River for phosphorus minim- uh, minimization. And I, I'm, I'm not clear if i- i- if the EPA, uh, focus on MS four in our town is strictly in the Charles River watershed or, or townwide. So that's, that's probably another Sean, uh, question.
Yeah, because I know Sean said that the whole town would be in the MS four or should be in the MS four. So I don't know when that would happen or when that would go, but that leads me to believe that we would have to regulate the whole town at some point anyway.
Yeah, you're probably, most of our adjoining towns, they're, you know, like Natick, I think, and Hollis, then the, the whole town is in, in MS four.
Right. So if we're, so if we, right, so if we add all town drainage systems to this in a way, when it does be, you know, it, it seems like that we're creating the same goal.
Catching up to the other towns around us.
Yeah. But we can talk to Sean and find out what the timing is and how much is MS four and if he has a problem if we say all town drainage systems.
So I'm gonna, would it work, I just put this in where we say MS four, should we say MS four and other town drainage systems? And I think we can, you know, we've already defined MS four, we can do a little bit of cleanup too, right? Like, we don't have to state it again and define it again.
Right.
Okay.
But we're having this discussion here because the term town storm drainage system was used here instead of MS four. But there are many other references to MS four where we probably, if it's our choice to expand this to be clear that we're including all town drainage systems, then we probably need to go back to all those MS four references and see if we need to insert all this, you know, all, all the other references to the town drainage systems.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, Jane. I think it's worth a conversation with Sean before we go crazy on this, um. So I'm gonna undo that and then flag this. Um, I can volunteer to call Sean to have a conversation with him, um, or Heidi, if you want to set up something for the three of us with Jane or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I, I think I understand the questions to ask, um.
I'm fine if you want to call him. Sometimes it's easier not, and he takes, like, he could take a call, but getting him to come to a meeting right now, he's been pretty swamped.
Okay. Maybe I'll start with Addie May and see if she knows, and then I'll go to Sean if she doesn't.
Okay. Yeah, that's why I thought tonight we'd get through the bulk and figure out where our questions are and then try to come back in the two weeks with something more. All right, we go down the page. If no one else has had any other questions on these first few. Uh, so Jane was wondering about this when we went back and forth on it. Um, my inclination is to keep this language in it. Uh, Jane, if you want to chime in, please. Bring what you.
I, I think my inclination is the same as yours. At the end of the day, Heidi, I mean, we had some discussion about whether we, um, you know, in the event that there is a conflict or an inconsistency between this bylaw and something else that is somewhere else, um, you know, this language could result in our saying that, you know, you have to comply with two different things that are inconsistent or that are, you know, not possible to, to both be complied with. But at the end of the day, since we don't know and haven't gone through that process, and maybe some of that will come out, you know, as part of the larger, um, consulting process. But since we don't know that now, probably the best choice is to just say, you know, do everything.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because this kind of says you do both the zoning and any other general bylaw that comes up. You know, because the stormwater is its own separate bylaw section, so. Okay, and the next part, the illicit connections. Uh, Jane and I also were, were discussed and Joyce had discussed too, whether definitions should have any more definitions, but, um, I think the thoughts are that we would say except as listed below or in the regulations. If we add or in the regulations right up on that first sentence. Um, because our regulations really has our list of definitions and the regulations are much easier to amend and make changes throughout the year. So I'd rather have our bylaw refer that the regulations have the definitions just so that we can make that more current as opposed to the one time a year. Um, and then question was.
Um, can I just, one thing about that, Heidi, the, um, I, the appendix A that's currently referred to, I did look at that and, you know, there actually are a lot of definitions there and some of them are also in the regs, but many of them are not. And many of them are useful. So if we are going to rely on just the regs, it would mean, you know, a fair amount of work to incorporate from appendix A what we want to incorporate in the regs.
So just leave it here and are also defined in appendix A? Just keep it as is? Add, add or in the regulations?
I don't know. Personally, I do like the idea of having them all in one place. I'm just saying that that will involve some work because there's a lot of extra stuff in appendix A that's not currently in the regs.
Right, and I think there's some, no, but I think some of our definitions were not in appendix A. Like that, the water, so the, the list, yeah, the lists aren't the same. That's the problem I have is the list, you got two different lists. There are overlaps, but they're not the same. So I guess there's a question of how would the planning board want to handle that?
So how is it decided which ones are listed here below? Like originally, that's how it was and then.
This is, yeah, this is what the existing bylaw says. Except as listed below, and the only one is illicit connection. It doesn't have illicit discharges as list connection or defined in appendix A. Yet our regulations are the ones that list all our definitions for the most part. So except as listed below, um, that's why I probably said, or, you know, something it should, I think you want to say somehow reference regulations and appendix A. So you cover the whole list.
Yeah, I mean, I find it a little bit confusing that listed isn't a list, um, even though I understand what it doesn't just mean, but I.
I know.
Um.
Yeah. Why don't we just have one definition?
Right.
It's defined. It's defined, so that has listed.
Or just put illicit connection in the definitions in the regs. I mean, we could do that too and not have this one stray definition.
Yeah, I don't know why they have one, just one. It's, it's like, it's not a list.
I'm reading this grammar very differently, I think, because it says except as listed below.
Yep.
Words, terms, this is throwing me off. I, I feel like it should be all words, terms, abbreviations and acronyms, right? But just to call it words, words that appear in this bylaw and are also defined in appendix A of the MS four shall be construed to have the meaning presented in appendix A. So it's really just saying where there's a conflict, like, except for those listed below.
Mm hmm.
Words here that are also defined in appendix A shall be construed to have the meaning in appendix A. So it's basically saying like appendix A rules.
Yeah.
Like rules everything else unless it's listed here or in the regulations. It's just a really weirdly worded, convoluted way to say that.
It's convoluted. Well, conceptually, would we rather have the definitions all in one place?
Like, but it can't be appendix A. Right, it has to be in two places.
It could be.
Right.
Appendix A is specific, whereas the definition of what is an illicit, uh, connection would be in our regulations.
Well, we have more than in our regulations than, than are in appendix A.
Yeah, appendix A is gonna be very, it's gonna be very general because it's statewide. It's the state's appendix.
Right.
So I don't think we can get everything in one place, but we maybe could have appendix A as appendix A and then have the rest of the definitions that pertain in one place, whether it be here in the regs or in the, or in the regulations or in the bylaw.
Which, yeah, that's what I was saying, and that's what I think we should put, put the rest of the definitions in the regulations and list the, as appendix A.
Including illicit connection?
That definition should be in the regulations.
Because it probably originally related to the MS four language. Specifically.
It'd surprise me if MS four didn't have an illicit connection definition, though. I wonder why there was, may, maybe there, maybe there isn't one, but I, I would think the state would have that.
I think they had illicit discharge.
Oh, I see.
I don't know if they had illicit connection.
Which allows an illicit discharge. I see. I see, okay. Um, so we're saying except as listed in the regulations, right? We're gonna.
But if we put illicit connections in the regulations, then in a way, I think we could try and make it more that definitions are found in the regulations and in appendix A or blah, 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 or some, I don't know. Just keep it simple.
There must have been some violation at some point for this thing in there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I.
We could just say the definitions are in appendix A and the regulations. And then all we have to do is make sure they're not inconsistent with one another.
Right. Because app- appendix A is now up to, there's a draft of twenty twenty four online. But we do qualify it or as most recently amended, so. Like that.
Yep.
We, yeah, we may want to say section three eighty so that we know we're alluding to the planning board regulations.
Or regulations promulgated here under, and then it could cover any section that we put regulations in.
Our regulations are three eighty.
Yeah, see, we're only in three eighty, but there are regulations for border health and something else. So when we just, so because the stormwater bylaw sits in section two hundred, planning board is section two forty, and then planning board regulations are three eighty. So this is sitting, you know, so my concern is if you got something in, in two hundred referring to regulations, it does not necessarily mean planning board regulations. Like that. Yeah.
Or even parentheses, uh, three eighty.
Yeah. I just feel like we should definitely be specific on which regulations we're talking about.
Yeah. And then this goes away because it's gonna get into the regs.
Right, yeah.
And then here we refer any other definitions shall be included in the regulations promulgated. I mean, it's here.
Yeah, we don't need that. We can just take that out.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I kind of wonder.
They already had a reference to the definitions.
Yeah.
I like this one better. It's cleaner.
Of course, we just made it.
Yeah. Um, all right, so applicability. Here we were just adding language again to expand beyond MS four. Wetland resource, public streets, abutting properties.
So here's a funny thing, though. So illicit discharges as defined in appendix A specifically refers to discharges to municipal stormwater sewer. So, you know, if now we're trying to talk about the entire drainage system, we would need to tweak that. And I don't know if appendix A is to state, you know, all comes straight from state stuff, maybe we don't want to do that.
Well, is it illicit because it's in violation of MS four? Is that what makes it illicit? Right?
The definition in appendix A says discharge, a, a illicit discharge is a discharge to a municipal separate storm sewer that is not composed entirely of stormwater.
Right, and I think, I think maybe the, the reason it's illegal, right, is because it's going to the MS four.
Yeah.
But we could so, so I don't know that this works in this definition, right? But we could also say discharges, connections and wastes into wetland resource areas, public streets and abutting properties. It, it's not an illegal discharge because it's not permitted under MS four, but we still don't want those. We still don't want discharges any pollutants or unauthorized stormwater or non-stormwater discharge. We don't want any of that in any of these places either.
Well, you know, we could, we could just say illicit discharges, defined terms, so that would pick up the MS four from appendix A, and then add and then say, you know, illicit discharges, because it says the following activities are prohibited. Illicit discharges could just be one in and of itself. And then, um, you know, discharges of any pollutant unauthorized stormwater or non-stormwater discharge to the drainage, town drainage system could be another.
Yes, so what if we said illicit discharges stands alone as a definition in appendix A? But then we add unauthorized discharges. I'm making up this language, okay? So this is just spaghetti on the wall. And I took this language, any pollutant unauthorized stormwater or non-stormwater discharge into the, the, these things that you're trying to.
Which is, which is says in B.
I just added B. Frank, I'm suggesting to add B.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't see that. I was.
I think it, one thing that kind of confuses the issue is right at, at the A up top, you list, you put illicit discharge.
You list, you put illicit discharges. The following activities are prohibited. I would just say the following activities are prohibited.
Yeah.
One of them is illicit discharges, another is obstruction, another is, you know, it's.
Agree. But I think we have to.
Confuses things.
Oh, and then we could just add it as a five.
Yes.
So we could do that because it's not under the heading of illicit discharges anymore. So now we could say unauthorized discharges, connections or connections or yard wastes into, how about that? Cause we've just, we've got discharges, connections and yard wastes.
That's fine. And then get rid of the other red language I put in for.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we don't even need to talk about yard waste separately because the illicit discharge definition says any discharge that is not composed entirely of storm water. So we, we don't really need to separately call out yard waste.
Yes, but I think it's not a bad idea to call out yard waste into wetland resource areas, right? I think when you think of a discharge or a connection which was defined upstairs as a discharge, you think of liquid waste. So I think that's probably was the intent of including yard waste separately.
Is you talking about leaves and, and grass and things like that that you would throw into a wetland?
People may not think of that as a discharge.
Right.
But this one, we could leave this and we could because it's not a defined term, right? So we could use yard wastes. No person shall dump yard waste into all of these things. They should say or.
If I could make a suggestion, I think number five, you, I would actually almost think about inserting that as a new number two, as in between one and two. Illicit discharges.
Oh, I see.
Are just to MS four because that's, we wanna use the so we just say illicit discharges as defined in Appendix A.
Uh huh.
And then number two would be, you know, other unauthorized discharges to the following places.
I like that other unauthorized.
Well, maybe illicit connection should start as number one.
Well, we could do this. We could do this.
Cause that's where it would begin, right?
This, like that, other, so illicit discharges and other unauthorized discharges. Illicit connections and other unauthorized connections. Is that?
Yeah, but we can take out all the language. We can just say illicit discharges, capital I, capital D, as defined in Appendix A if we want to say that. And then we can say illicit connections, capital I, capital C, as defined in the regs. And we don't need all the rest of this language.
We can, although this language does point the finger to the person who did it, otherwise it just says it is prohibited. And I, I don't know, I just don't, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know if we need to like. You, you're right, it's prohibited. We could just.
Yeah.
And then this is the town right of way, but that's here, right?
Right.
Well.
Can we change public streets to the town right of way?
No, I don't think that's the same thing.
Right, can we change public streets to the town right of way?
Uh, no, I don't think the, because I don't think public streets are necessarily town right of ways.
Oh.
I, I think of town right of ways.
Seven would not be right.
Right, and I think a town right of ways is the extra, like the sidewalk or the extra parts along the edge of roads.
Well, can we just add town right of way to that list and two?
We, we could.
I'm just, that's what I'm asking, because I don't think we can put it here because it wouldn't be defined as an illicit discharge if that's only to the MS four.
Yeah, but this is what, this is what the existing language was.
Agreed, but if, but if we're contradicting
Right.
Appendix A by adding this.
Right.
Then maybe we should.
Right, we should put that down in here, yes.
Like that?
Yeah.
And maybe we're gonna delete all of this, but.
I think we should because it, it gets confusing if you don't, because you're referring to, you know.
Well, if we take it out, I think we might need to elaborate on what we mean by discharges in this term, which is not defined. Or maybe we define this in the regs.
I think that's Jane's, Jane's point is to define it in the regs.
Discharge is also defined in exhibit, in Appendix A. It says, when used without qualification, it means a discharge of a pollutant. So we gotta be careful here.
Yeah, it's not the same thing.
Yeah. Now, we're, you know, we have a capitalized D here, so it's okay. You know, it has a common sense meaning, not a defined term meaning the way we've done it.
Yeah. As long as people understand that.
So, so you're suggesting we would black out all of this, strike out all of this. Is this understood? This is defined in Appendix A. Is this understood?
Well, we could say other unauthorized discharges of any kind.
Or just unauthorized discharges.
Well, so then what is the list of authorized versus unauthorized?
Well, authorized is MS four. That's the only permitted discharge.
Yeah.
And then you gotta capitalize the, when you say illicit discharge, capitalize the D.
Do we? I don't, I didn't look at that.
And then illicit connections, if we're gonna do the same thing, get rid of the rest of it, you have to capitalize a C, because then that refers to the definition.
But there's an additional, in the case of illicit connections, we might want to keep the um, illicit connections regardless of whether the connection was permissible under applicable law at the time of connection.
Hmm, I see.
And I guess that's a question. Should that language be added to illicit discharges as well? Would there be any illicit discharges that would have been potentially authorized?
No, because I, I think this is why connection was defined up here, because that's like, um, it's the, the infrastructure that allows the discharge to occur, right? So the infrastructure may have been permitted at the time. But a discharge is happening in real time, if you, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I think it, I think this belongs here, but maybe not here.
And then in four un- unauthorized connections.
Oh yeah, that wouldn't really work, would it? Cause that's the infrastructure, well.
Isn't it covered in, it's covered in three, right?
Ye- yes, I think you're right. Let me look at the illicit connection. Well, it's like an outfall into a town wetland. The connection could be the drain that goes into the town wetland. And then the discharge is the substance, the pollutant going through that drain into the town wetland. I think we need it separately. I think we need connection.
But unlike, uh, but the only reason we needed it separately for an illicit discharge is because that was tied to the MS four. But the definition of illicit connection is not tied to the MS four.
Well, if we're saying that it's, it's a drain or conveyance which facilitates an illicit discharge as described below into the MS four system, right? Like that's, that's like an illegal tap into the MS four pipe, if you will.
And it's, but it specified MS four in that definition.
Whereas this one would be like an illegal pipe that goes to a town wetland that's not in the MS four.
Wasn't there a pipe on Farm Street? On Farm Road, rather? There was a problem with something clogging.
Like a makeshift culvert. I mean, that's the issue. It's not maintained by the town if it's.
Yeah.
But, but all I'm saying is that Heidi had already removed into the municipal storm drain system. So if that's coming out of the definition, then an illicit connection is now any drain or conveyance which allows an illicit discharge.
But an illicit discharge is tied to the MS four.
So that's what we have to say is what if we're gonna strictly go by the Appendix A, does the Appendix A say into the MS four?
Illicit connection, illicit discharge as defined there does refer to the MS four. But we don't need to use the defined term here. We could just say which allows any discharge. And then you wouldn't need item four below, I think.
So you're saying if this is not capital I, capital D, then there's no connection to the MS four?
Yeah. Is it, you just said which allows any discharge.
Oh, any discharge, yes. Or any unauthorized discharge.
Uh, yeah.
But we haven't made that definition yet. So I'm like, we're not putting the definition in here, right? So we need to bank that somewhere else.
Right.
All I'm saying is you could write the definition in a way that you wouldn't need to have a separate item listed.
Yes, but, but we're not writing the definitions for like another year, right? Until the AGO approves. So we need to bank it somewhere. We can't just like.
Okay.
We, we can't just jumble it up and then, and then figure it out later, right? So this would have to be illicit connection, so this was, would be for the regs.
Yeah.
And I don't know even if this is the best place to keep it, right? But the definition of illicit connection would be surface or subsurface drain or convey, I mean, does it, yeah, it's an interconveyance which allows a what? Any discharge? Any discharge? An unauthorized discharge? What do we decide?
If your basement floods and you need to temporarily pump it out, then you're in violation.
Yeah.
Well, does that mean that any French drain would be in violation? That would not be good.
Yeah, but your French drain, if it's staying onto your property, it's okay. You, you just can't drain into wetlands, public streets or abutting properties. Your French drain shouldn't be draining over to a neighbor's property.
Right, but if there is wetlands on your property at times and.
Yeah, you shouldn't be French draining into them, I think.
No, I know.
But I, 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 I've seen it commonly when people's basement floods, they discharge and it ends up in the streets. I guess that's.
Right. And then it ends up in a, um, stormwater system or catch basin.
Which could be the MS four.
Jane, I lost the thought of where we were going with this definition to make this unnecessary.
Sorry.
I just want to follow that through.
If an illicit connection means you can't connect to the MS four or any other town drainage, any of the other things that we listed.
Okay.
Discharges.
So.
Then, then you're, then you've covered it. I do hear your point about we don't have that definition yet. Or won't have that definition yet. I mean, I hear you on that. So um, I, I guess if we don't wanna, if, if we don't want to revisit this, then we can, then we maybe just have both.
I would say just have both. It's not that much extra language right now. As long as they're both consistent, then we're, we're okay.
Gosh, we've only got through our applicability, guys.
I, I know.
Past nine o'clock.
Well, by your air, by your bar on the side, we're halfway through.
And let, let's go, let's keep going so we can get through and, because next week we'll be revisiting it again after we have more time to think about it all.
Then we have a limited category of non-stormwater discharges are where there's no viable alternative. So that, that could be the, the French drain or the pumped basement that we were just talking about.
Right.
You can, you, you have, you can get a permit for that. Where there's not a viable alternative.
Yeah.
Um, is this meant to apply to anything, even if it's happening totally on your property, or is it only meant to apply to discharges that go into one of the aforementioned areas?
It's pretty much just into the aforementioned air areas, except if you've got wetlands resources on your property, you can't go into that.
Right, but.
So you're saying into XYZ here, right? Cause right now, if we don't have that it doesn't say where we're discharging into that could be permitted.
Right. I mean, for example, I've got like eight downspouts on my property that the builder originally just ran them all to splash blocks. And some of them still run to splash blocks, but some of them had to get routed farther away from the foundation, so they went out to dry wells or um, just drain to low points on the property. They didn't go to my neighbor's property. They didn't go to the streets. They didn't go to wetlands. Um, I don't.
So then it wouldn't, they wouldn't rise to anything here.
Well, except.
It says. Um.
Right, so this langu, this into, into a particular location doesn't exist right now, right? So if, well, I think what Frank, what Rob is saying is that if without the, without specifying where it's going into, this could be construed as any.
Anything. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's what we have right now.
Doesn't make it right.
Nope, it doesn't, but I, I agree. I think then, yeah. Well, let's highlight that to be.
Well, should we just do this? Not abutting properties. You can't permit it into abutting properties, but that.
Well, I mean, I, you know, an illicit connection, if it's authorized, if it's been authorized, then it wouldn't be illicit, right?
Right, right.
So.
This is a non-stormwater discharge.
I was gonna say, yeah, I was gonna say non-stormwater. This isn't gonna be your gutters.
No, no, it's right here. It's laid out right here. Pumped groundwater, foundation drains.
Okay.
Basements, right?
Yeah.
But the question is, where are we permitting to go into? Because right now it just says discharges, right?
Mm hmm.
Where does the town permit them to go into? Is that into the MS four?
Yeah, I, I would think it should be saying something like um, stormwater discharges are presumably already covered by the rest of the stormwater regs that's in place. So non-stormwater discharges into those specific kinds of areas may be permitted that, as, as shown, as below. I guess I'm saying, we're not trying to um, are we trying to pro- prohibit this on a person's property? I wouldn't think so, like, you know. I, I don't know. Uh.
Well, so, so I took out a butter's property and I'm gonna take out wetland resource areas, because the town's not gonna permit. Right? Right, into these. They're certainly not gonna permit onto an a butter's property.
No, I I think that would happen if you pumped onto your own property, but there's so much volume, it ends up in the street or something like that. You see that happening a lot where people are pumping their basements and with good intent, but it ends up in the street ultimately or wherever.
So the so not the MS four or the train town drainage system, we're just talking about sort of incidentally onto the right of way or the street.
Because one of the categories, I think that.
Well, right of way and street are in here. I'm just making sure that and I agree with you that the town could do that, but could the town permit non-stormwater into the MS four? I don't think they could.
I think we should talk with Sean because it said there, you know, it's up to what, you know, what would he permit? What does he? How does he think this is what is reasonable?
Right.
If you're gonna talk to Addie May or Sean Steph, do you want to add this one in?
Yep.
And then. And then I guess it's it's kinda I'm not sure why C is there at all because basically B says a limited category of non-stormwater discharges may be allowed with a permit. To me, that implies okay, everything else is prohibited. So why do you specifically list a couple of things as prohibited?
Because I think the well, so my guess is that these people may think that these things are okay. Like, if someone was Googling in the code, swimming pool discharge, right?
Yeah.
Then they would come to this. Like, what do I do with my swimming pool waste? Well, you can't put it into a stormwater system.
And this one clearly it specifically says discharging water from any source onto the street is prohibitive. So Jim, you know, I just think it's what people choose to enforce.
Oh, pool water would be contaminated, right?
Right, but the other one is the people pumping their basement. C two is clearly people pumping their basement out onto the street, which I have seen as well in another town.
And why does it say dechlorinated swimming pools in particular? If I wanna pump out the swimming pool, I can chlorinate it.
Just leave it chlorinated.
Just should say swimming pool discharges.
Well, I I think there's something to be said for people saying, well, I dechlorinated it, so it's not a problem anymore. I mean, I think people just don't really think about this stuff.
Yeah.
Like.
No.
Trying to get around the rules.
Right, so if we put it in black and white, it's harder to do that.
Okay, so to continue the ridiculousness here, I have a swimming pool. Is there any valid way for me to ever empty it other than having empty the water into a truck and have it trucked out of town?
Slowly water your lawn with it.
Okay, so I can do it on my property without going to Sean for a permit, as long as it doesn't run off the property.
Or into wetlands, yeah, on your property.
Right, okay, for mine.
Pool might be harder, but a a jacuzzi or hot tub might be okay.
I don't have a pool.
I I I I use the example of the basement. I think that's common, though. I think that happens a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And usually ends up in the street, so. If there's happening, you probably better go get a permit, I guess.
Oh, I have a question. Can we go back to item three, obstruction of MS four? Is that still in there? Yeah, so it says um with the normal flow obstruct shall obstruct or interfere with the normal flow of stormwater into or out of the MS four. Do we mean into there? Because we've already, isn't that what we've covered in all the other categories? Isn't this just supposed to talk about obstructing out? Or that's my question anyway.
I mean, if you obstruct it in, you could cause flooding somewhere, right? If you like cover up your catch basins. You're you're not allowing it to function.
Okay, all right, that makes I get it.
I have a suggestion. What if we call try to aim for ending the meeting at nine thirty? Um, because I'm getting a little tired and I think we all are and it just makes it harder to do this uh work that's very detail oriented. And come back to this uh next meeting. And go to the other items that we have on our agenda.
Yeah, we're just running up on, I mean, this is what happens as we prep for the town meetings is that we really run up on deadlines and we have to have the the language finalized and then hold public hearings within a certain timeframe.
So I have a possible solution for that. That was gonna be on my next topic for warrant language. I mean, I think we could stop here. We we kind of went through C and we can say we we could pick up with D on the next meeting. But I think I can buy us a little more time for review with the warrant language I'm proposing to be put in.
I I was having some concerns about that, but let's look at it.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just trying to pull it up and.
All right, so I had so much feedback from people saying that, you know, our articles were so long and so wordy and and the amount of pages we took up in in the mailer going out for advisory and like other towns don't do this and you know, it's like it's gone back and forth. So I I looked at Dover and then they they really don't list all their changes. And then I also found out that at some time our planning board actually did do the same thing that they said. Uh, so Steph, if you wanna, if you were able to bring up that language.
I did, and it's like I forgot that Zoom doesn't share my whole screen. It only shows.
Oh.
I have it. I'm like looking at it like, yeah, it's right there, right?
So keeping it very simple like this, if the warrant language for stormwater just said deleting it in its entirety, replacing complete text and that it's the text will be in the office of the clerk. What we really need is language that the select board is approving for the warrants, but not necessarily everything in the article in January. So that's why I was thinking that if we gave them this of what they could publish in the book, we would have a couple more weeks to work on our document. Rather than go line by line, which we had to keep going back and saying, oh, yeah, we changed this. We heard from this person this changed and, you know, it would it would eliminate a lot of the people commenting on us of what changes we feel.
We we sent it everything with the strike throughs and.
Right.
Yeah, I can see.
Right, never after we after we had sent it into the select board, we got so many people commenting on, oh, no, this should change or that should change. And we couldn't do anything because we had already given it to the select board with all those details.
I I guess I feel like like unless you do that, people aren't reviewing it, right? If you create a barrier and say, well, if you wanna see what you're voting on, you have to go to the town clerk. It feels.
We'll have it online as well.
I know, I know, but it's not in the warrant, right? So I guess I feel like transparency tells, especially for stormwater management, which we just discussed is like four or five pages. It's just like the the other thing was weird because it was like a paragraph taken out and a word changed and different paragraph taken out and a word changed. That was the housekeeping one. And when you showed me the Dover thing last time for the it was for a housekeeping item. Do they do that for all for their remove and replace bylaws? Because it seems like if you're doing a big remove and replace, that you would want the transparency of showing what is going in and 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 I do agree that like a lot of people had last minute changes. But I I think that's actually a positive thing. I it's a timing issue. But the fact that people are reading it and providing input is is um is valuable because there were good points raised. We might never have seen some of those inconsistencies.
I I can't tell you the frustration I got from in-house people and the select board members with the amount of changes when we had to keep saying, well, can we do? We have another amendment. We have this. Like, the more we talked about it, the more things that came up. And I don't feel we can go down that same route again. It's like I think we're gonna get stuck with no, this is it. Because they they.
It feels really opaque. It feels like we don't want people to read it if we do it this way. That's how that's how it comes across to me.
Yeah, I I think this is and I will double check. I'm pretty sure what I got from Dover was the entirety and replacing it with the complete text language. Um, and I think we did that as well in one of ours. I'll look back on some of ours, but it was just uh, you know, and and some of the people we get the comments from, I think they'd look online and read it. There's some of the ones that in general want to see what we're doing. And would would follow it, but.
Well, is there a way that we could um keep it this way for purposes of the warrant? But when we do the mailer to everybody, you know, about town meeting, that's something that will include the, you know, the line by line?
They just include the warrant.
Yeah.
What if you ask Jeremy what his thoughts are and how we could approach this? And he may have some other ideas or thoughts on on this.
Yeah. Could do that.
And then, you know, at least it'd be another another opinion from somebody that's going.
I I think I would also, though, wanna run it by like the people in charge of the warrant, right? Like the the or the not in charge, but the the people who lean the most on the warrant for their information, right? Being advisory and select board. Do they feel that this approach, like, I don't wanna just propose this and submit this and then come back and find out, no, we actually have to write the whole warrant.
Right, we have some we have some time. We have some time right now. You know, we we want it. We have to get it to them in by the end of January. So we have a little bit of time. We could ask now and say, is do you want? Is it okay if we go in this direction or not? And if not, we we know to we have time to get it complete, but.
Are the public hearings that we have to hold as a planning board and the public hearings that advisory holds before town meeting, are those on the warrant or are they on the bylaws?
Uh, so our public hearings are on the bylaws. Because we're gonna be proposing changes. Advisory, their their public hearing is on the warrant articles, which happen to be our bylaws.
For us, it's the bylaws, yes.
Yeah. They they call, I mean, their advisory hearing is on each of the warrant articles.
And so is border of uh select board. It goes to each of them as well.
Yeah.
That's what that bloody Saturday is and.
No, I know. I'm just I'm just like what I'm if this is it for the bylaw, it's just not very informative. Is what I'm saying. Like, if Bloody Saturday said puts this language on the screen and decides whether to approve it or not, you know, it's just, it feels.
Right, well, we'd have to have um handouts. You know, we'd have to have handouts that would have all this material available that night and, you know, on
Okay.
online. Maybe so, yes, we'd put it on the screen, but we'd have a whole handout with what our changes were.
Yeah, so. Yeah, okay, I just um. Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing what what advisory, specifically advisory and select board members who are up and on stage at the town meeting.
Yeah.
How they would feel about this type of a vote because it's just so different from the past X number of years and if it changed, what was the reason for that, right? Like, maybe we did it in the past and maybe it changed because people complained, right? So there's gotta be some history. I don't wanna make a decision as a board right now without sort of understanding the bigger picture because I don't think I have enough longevity to.
No, and we don't need a decision on this tonight. It was just, I I was looking through and trying to see and I said, well, here is a possible solution, which you know, kinda would fit for the select board signing their warrant articles, but would allow us to have our document separate.
Yeah, I definitely agree that there are like process advantages, but I just worry about that it looks like we're just trying to brush stuff under the rug.
Yeah.
Making and creating another step for people who actually wanna look into it.
I think one of the ways to get around that again is the presentation that you do at um at the annual town meeting and the presentations you do with advisory and, you know, during those times.
But there there aren't many people who go to those. I mean, other than the usual cast of characters who would look online like Heidi was saying, I do know people in town who don't engage until they.
But in the presentation that you're making during the, you know, Bloody Saturday would be the full thing. Right, as opposed.
Yeah, but people don't go to Bloody Saturday.
Yeah.
People don't go. It's like thirty people. It's not the same, not the voting public. It 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 would be great if they did because that's the purpose of.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to find out. So that that that's you know, I'm happy to talk to Jeremy. I'm happy to talk to the chair of advisory and the chair of the select board. I don't think we should go in in front of one of their meetings to do this, but but you know, let 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 them provide some input to us. I think that's a good idea.
Can I also maybe just suggest a middle ground, which is that because I am concerned, I mean, a lot of the stuff we're talking about right now is just you know, mind-numbingly boring, you know, well, appendix A and append, you know, and the regs and the definitions here and the definitions there. I mean, to try to at any point really walk the public through all of that is I think things get derailed very quickly when you're trying to do cover all of that. And the reality is that most of this does not make a substantive change in the law. So, you know, maybe what we could do is say, okay, where are we actually making some kind of substantive change in the law? For example, you know, we used to cover just MS four. Now we're covering more broadly the drainage system. However, this is what's typical, you know, in other towns or it's what, you know, so if we could boil it down to just the the this is where there are meaningful substantive changes, maybe that would be a middle ground.
I think last year, when we went through this, it it took I think advisory, it took several attempts to explain things to them and there wasn't an initial grasp of what was happening unless you were part of the process and is that correct?
It that's exactly correct, you know, and I I had to meet in small groups and and break everything down because we had to go almost line by line.
But then it becomes more difficult for the general public to kind of follow what's happening without being engaged with the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I I think when we hold our public hearing, the notice in the paper would actually be a lot more detailed. It's not gonna just say that, you know, it was replaced. I that would have to go. We're look, you know, I would be citing there, looking at talking about these specific things, those terms, like kind of what Jane's saying.
I guess my concern is is that, like, I do know people in town, I know more people in town who wait, get the warrant in the mail, read it the night before the town meeting and use that as the basis for their votes.
Yeah.
I know more people who do that than engage in the process, whether that be the public board hearing.
Right.
On a board or committee, right? And so if the information is not there and they're looking at this piece of paper and it says, oh, the town clerk, right? I I just maybe, is there a middle ground where we could at least describe wha- what we're trying to do? So I just put some like, I put some track changes here, right? Like.
Yeah.
So replace it, delete it in its entirety, replace it with this new one, which changes the following, right? So that you know what you're voting on in concept.
I, yeah, I think we can do a better description. We just can't say, we couldn't couldn't say changes, you know, definitions, that we can't cite specifics unless we cite every specific.
So it would be like um So it would be like, um, you know, it 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 would, I was, I wasn't going for specifics, but like changes, for example, the thresholds requ- and the permitting processes for development projects or something, you know what I mean, like?
Yeah, we, I think we can come up with something, but I think um.
Cause it just looks like a blank slate.
I know, I know, I know. And that's, that's what Dover's looked like, and I was like shocked, yeah.
Well, I think, I think we have a a path forward. When we get the answer back and then we continue this this discussion.
Yeah. And Steph, I think if we also said on file with the office of the town clerk and online, people that got that the night before could go right online and look at the whole thing where we'd have a detailed explanation.
Potentially, it's just like, even me as like an engaged citizen, I can't find things on the on the town website.
Well, that's a, that's another problem, yeah. I agree with you on that, because I have the same thing.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just trying to look up the warrant articles from last year. I was like, okay, is it, who's it under? Is it under town clerk? Is it under select board? And I finally just had to do a search, because it wasn't on either page.
And the Google search is more effective than the town's search function.
Oh, boy. All right. And the other one would be our miscellaneous zoning bylaw updates, which is the last, what we did last time. And the specific things I was looking for were what the AG picked up, the the different ones, the permissive that we missed last time, aligning our table of use with the definition section. Um, so we definitely should change those. And then also deleting number twenty seven, low and moderate income apartments. And and we did not have, and table of use did not def- say what OS was, so that's where I was saying we would say what OS was. And that was the tables showing showing the changes below. I think most of the other changes we've discussed would wait for doing the complete zoning overhaul.
Well, the two asterisks we already covered in the main language, right? That's the first, the first thing in the main paragraph.
But right, but we have to show what what it looks like on, like when we we list it in the paragraphs, but then we show the actual changes what we, in the text. So we bold or we cross strike out.
But wouldn't, wouldn't, on that logic, wouldn't we put like twenty seven, get lower moderate income apartments and then strike through the whole thing?
You're right, I should have put that in, yep.
And we're only showing the table, we're not showing the language in that way.
Right.
Okay.
Cause the, cause the actual language on twenty six A was correct. We said permissive in all areas. We just didn't do the table. Um, and actually, for deleting the whole section twenty seven, I don't think we have to show the whole thing. We might be able to just say deleting section twenty seven and not list, because section twenty seven is pretty long for a description, but I I we can ask town council on that.
I mean, everything else is covered in the paragraph except for the line in the table of use regulations of twenty six A. So we could take out this other stuff at the bottom. Well, you need OS, because you didn't describe it all in the paragraph, but and just say, where it says table of use regulations, we could just say amend um, line twenty six A in the table of use regulations to read as follows. And then you wouldn't need to do anything else.
I guess I'm missing where you're saying that.
Where it says table of use regulations right now, if we just said amend the table of use regulations, amend line twenty six A of the table of use regulations to read as follows, we wouldn't need to say, we wouldn't need to repeat the asterisks, because we've already covered that.
So, but I have it right at the top, we'll amend section table of use twenty six A asterisk.
Mending the footnote. Footnote. At least that's how I read that, amending the footnote.
Yeah.
Which is already covered, so you don't need to say it again down below, I don't think.
You know, I I think what I have to do is amend table of use twenty six A and the footnote. Oh, um. I have to say and amending the footnote, because it's both. So I should say, amending the table uses twenty six A, take off the two asterisks there.
You want me to make changes here?
Sure.
Well, then say section two forty dash three point two, table of use is twenty six A to read as stated below. Cause otherwise, it's not clear that that's what this is.
Oh, like something like that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Then you could delete the other section below that, then. You weren't, thought you were repeating yourself, so you now you have just have it in the paragraph.
Well, that, I think that's what Jane was trying to do, yeah.
Yeah, I think she was trying to do, but I think we have to show the text. So I don't, I would not get rid of that yet, because all the things we had before, we've done verbiage, and then we did the examples of what the text looks like. Normally, we've had more text changes, so it doesn't look so short. This one is very short, but.
It says the text, re- amending the footnote to this use is permissive. Is that what you're talking about?
I'm I'm talking about the whole thing.
So Heidi's talking about showing twenty seven.
We can say, we can say just amending the footnote and not saying in the verbiage, this use is permitted. But usually they want a better description.
What kind of argument?
You know, let me talk to town council and find out what they're recommending.
Yeah, I mean, if twenty seven doesn't exist anymore, it shouldn't be at all in the table of use regulations, so I think that's actually confusing to put it in there.
But it's it's striking through it, I think, is what Heidi's saying, right?
Yeah, we've always shown the changes.
Now we're arguing the opposite of what we're arguing in in the previous.
Because the previous one is so long, it was gonna be pages. And that's where I said, if we can, if it's just a couple little things, then yes, I think it's fine to show what the changes were, but and and we could even not do that, Frank, and do what we did with, and say, see what, we, you know, see the changes in the document at the town clerk or online and not do all this.
But you, but you know, as long as you explain it well enough, like you're doing in in the the written paragraph above it.
Yeah.
Showing that what it's gonna look like actually in there, I don't know that that really provides.
I I, yeah, I think we could say, uh, you know, loo- as shown in the document on file with the town clerk and get rid of the examples.
You could get rid of everything except the one paragraph, if you just added after, you know, amend section table of uses notation of OS to read and then, you know, write it like you did up above with the, with the footnote, the double asterisk footnote.
Like that? Wait, what?
No, no, just take the, the OS, scroll down a little bit, see how OS, yeah, there's if you just took that language and you put it up in the paragraph, the way you, the way we did with the double asterisk, then it's all covered in one paragraph, you don't need anything else. So it's a table of uses notation of OS to read, quote, OS permissive as otherwise provided in section blah blah.
Sorry, I thought this was gonna be quick.
Well, we don't need the office of the town clerk. Why is that?
I think what Heidi is saying is there has to be a place where someone can look and see the addition and the strike through of exactly how the code is changing.
So maybe you should say
Well, that's a question for council, I guess, but I, you know, I that might be a visual aid, but frankly, I think the way we've, I was more confused by what was here. I I had a hard time figuring out what was here, because randomly, the table of use regulations is getting repeated after we just described what we were doing. So, uh, just ask council.
Yeah. And the formatting, when they do the warrant, looks a little different, like the paragraphs are longer and then the other parts indented, so it looks very clear more, it looks clearer that that those are excerpts. But. Yeah, I think we first just have to figure out, number one, can we shorten the language to to the storm wart management example? Yes or no? And number two, the miscellaneous zoning, can we just put all of it in the verbiage and not do the examples?
That could be the question that we ask the same people as well. We could ask J- um, town manager, select board chair and advisory chair.
Well, the the verbiage one, maybe town council. Yeah, I don't know, but yes, we should ask them all.
Okay, can we move on from this? Thank you. All right, uh, there's other items for consideration, hoping we just did that and so are we on to other business and report on meetings with other boards and entities? Is that where we are right now, guys?
Yes.
All right. I think that's the Heidi Show.
Uh, I'm on the town planner report. Jim, if you wanted to give a quick update on anything else, or wait till next?
Uh, there's three items on historical commission. One of the items we discussed last night were the sign initiatives on the town campus and where those might go and those will not be placed anywhere until there's more definitive plans for the circulation path and likely not until after the spring, so there's no immediate plans for those signs to be installed. As may have been conveyed in a previous meeting, but so there there'll be, there'll be more planning and permissions in place for those. The 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 second item is the historic old commission and the historic district commission is updating the language in the historic district commission design guidelines. And we'll probably wanna have that reviewed by town council, but I don't know if this board would have any input on wanting to review that language or modify it. But that is something that is ongoing. And then the third item would be we're initiating a demolition review period. And what's involved with putting that together, looking at other towns, maybe talking to other towns to see how they've gone about it. And what that path forward might look like. So it's just in the uh, initial stages right now, but those are some thoughts and uh,
Yeah, I'm sorry, what are we demolishing?
The demolition bylaw review period. Yes, every other town around us basically has is
I got the rest of it. I just, I just saw we were demolishing something. It's just the bylaw you're changing.
Yeah, it's our, or or enacting a demolition review um period. I'm looking at other towns and how they've started that process and what that path looks like to to get in there. I know in the past, there's generally not been a willingness to adopt it. Maybe that's different now. I guess that was quite a while ago, but uh, maybe there isn't. I I think we wanna look at um, what that process looks like and how that gets started and how feasible it might be. It's just, i- i- it's uh an exploratory thing right now.
Yes, for town property or?
No, this would be for any demolition permit, if it's historical property, if it's uh on the national register, if it's on the state um, or town archive or forgot the name for the town property, the inventory. There's historical significance, so um, the historical commission would review the architect control or historical significance of the property and make a determination whether um the the review period would go into effect, whether it's six months or a year, I think a year is more effective, so the historical commission would seek um alternative measures to demolition or ways to mitigate that somehow. It's typically how that works. We're looking into that and what what that, how that might get started and what it would, might look like in Shireburn, so.
Great. Keep us posted.
Sure.
Any other board uh, meetings with other boards or entities?
What is, is this the slot in which the, we would cover the pre-submission conference, or is that not part of, Heidi, this is a question for you?
Pre-submission conference.
With Bob Murchison?
Oh, um, yes. It's an entity, so yes. If you, do you wanna cover it?
Something you wanna cover now or wait till it actually happens?
No, I think it's a report.
Yeah, it's a report out from
Yeah.
having met, met with him. Not, not the whole board, it will be coming to the board, but
Yeah.
Um, in a nutshell, revised proposal for the farm road property, the fourteen acres on Farm Road, for which we've already done an A and R and a revised A and R, but there's like a lot in the back that is potentially gonna be proposed as a back lot, a four point four lot, which can have reduced frontage, street frontage, but double the, more than double the, at least double the acreage, the zoning acreage and uh, double the setbacks or bigger setbacks as prescribed in four, section four point four. Um, so the four point four lot um, is a tentative proposal on the table, and he was just sort of confirming that the process, the pathway forward would be a planning board special permit to allow for it with a common driveway.
Right, and it would involve an A and R to rejoin to the properties, because this four point four has to be a complying lot and a separate, and and the four point four back
Breaking off a four point four lot.
Right, so. Even, it it would involve rejoining two of the properties and then submitting for a four point four special permit. Part of that process is dividing up the property. So, right now, he had been thinking of putting two homes back on that seven acre large lot via either a common driveway or an open space subdivision. He has a potential buyer that is looking to have just one home back there, um, which would make it a four point four lot advantages, but the town would be less impervious surface, less, you know, it's, it would keep things away from some of the construct, the uh conservation land area. Also, when you have a four point four lot, you cannot divide the lot any further. So it would be, meaning only one house would be built on that seven acre property.
Ever.
So
Restriction, yeah.
Rest, yeah, uh, so, but to do a common driveway, that is also going to be a pan- planning board approval process. So, these are all just concepts out there right now, um, but it was just a pre-conference to see what things could be done and there are pathways in our bylaws that say this is possible with planning board approval.
He also has to meet other approvals, uh, that he might have to seek even before he comes to see us, so.
Right.
We, we might see him at some point in time with respect to this. This is an exploratory, uh, discussion with just, uh, what, what could be done with that and, um, and wha- what the pathways would look like and what the processes would look like.
Yep. Is that it for other boards? You want a town planner one quickly?
Yeah.
Okay, the only thing I was gonna highlight was there is the Christmas market at the community center this weekend. And I will be out there with, um, information on the Sherburne transportation improvement pro- program for the downtown. We have the flyer that's made with a QR code on it for people to sign up where they can get information. Uh, and also on the open space and recreation plan flyer, we have a survey going on right now. Um, there was a mailer sent out to everyone. We've got a hundred and ninety responses back so far. Um, we're hoping to keep getting some more responses on that and, uh, see that what involved with, um, planning downtown area and other areas of town. Oh, and I noticed that the, for, Rob, I'm sure you've noticed that the pedestrian crossing lights are getting progress on uh, cider hill and, and Goulding East and West. They've installed the posts and they're almost complete.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Yep. Uh, and the, uh, traffic coming islands were installed on Western Ave to mixed reviews.
Can't take the sharp turn anymore.
Yeah, right.
It is a sharp turn.
You said there's mixed reviews?
Yes.
So I, I think they're great. I mean, I'm, I'm in that area, so they're like, oh, you know, but, um, how are they gonna plow around them? I mean, I know, I know they have like pylons, but I just am like, I don't know anything about plowing. I guess they, they considered that, like the plowers know.
I would hope so. We'll find out, I guess. We'll find out.
What are, what are the negative reviews on them, Heidi? Just that they're
Uh, well, and, and.
That you have to slow down?
Yes, I had one very irate person swearing in my messages on that. You know, how are trucks supposed to get down? I was like, okay, um, you know, and, and that was a concern that it was, they felt it was gonna cause more accidents. You know, and visibility on some. And then I had neighbors saying, thank you, this is great because it is slowing people down, so.
Is it keeping car carriers away?
I don't know if it's keeping them away yet. I think, you know, I think it's.
Cuz they still use Western Avenue, even though they're not supposed to.
Right, right.
Only challenge I've run into is getting around bikers.
That's one of the comments.
Has a really limited distance in which you can pass a biker and, um, to me, that's a small price to pay for having a more manageable speed of travel.
Yeah.
But it, it was something that it was, it's noticeable cuz a lot of people bike that road.
Okay, okay.
I'm on it a lot, so I don't know.
So, yeah. And that's it for town planner report.
All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting. I'm make a motion to adjourn this meeting at nine fifty-four PM. Any discussions? Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Steph?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Brett?
Hi.
And Rob?
Hi.
My friend Will Comanay as well. Thank you, everybody. Great evening.
And next meeting in two weeks. Do we wanna keep it on Zoom?
Yeah.
Like tonight, we could have all been snowed in. I was like, oh my gosh, I'm so happy it wasn't hybrid. But, okay. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.